Okay, remember to speak into your microphone so you want to bring them closer to you.
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law by editor to my right and left of council chambers. Chief, can you lead us in the place of allegiance?
I would like to introduce the byline of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
You.
Councilmember Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
That's it.
Council President Kim Chohun? Councilmember Pistonik?
Here.
Councilmember Vargas?
Here.
Borough Attorney Renaud?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovar?
Here.
Special Counsel Bowman?
Here.
Here.
Tonight, we have a proclamation, a presentation for the Art of Middlesex County Direct Support Professional Recognition Week, and that's October 7 through the 30, 2025. Councilmember Postonik, could you please speak that because that wasn't your question? All the good work.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be very happy to. So without further ado, whereas every day in New Jersey, more than thirty thousand men and women work as direct support professionals, providing exemplary critical support services to hundreds of thousands of children and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities; whereas direct support professionals have dedicated their professional lives in supporting, serving, and empowering individuals with developmental disabilities, enabling them to live fulfilling lives in the community; and whereas direct support professionals provide a broad range of support, including health, personal care, participating in school, work, home, religious, and recreational activities, leaving important life skills and general day-to-day activities to foster full citizenship; and whereas direct support professionals develop strong trusting relationships with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities that are personally enriching for both the individuals and professionals; and whereas the Art of Middlesex County values the hard work of its direct support professionals and recognizes the support of the administration and governing body of the Borough Highland Park for these invaluable workers who support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities; and whereas the week of September 7 through 13, 2025, has been designated Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week to honor and recognize the significant contributions that direct support professionals make to our communities; and whereas every day, the Art of Middlesex County's direct support professionals make a tremendous difference in the lives of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, strengthening our communities and supporting our most vulnerable citizens for which they deserve our respect and deepest admiration. Now therefore, it may resolve that the mayor and borough council do hereby proclaim September 7 through 13, 2025, as Direct Support Professional Recognition Week. In Middlesex County and the Art of Middlesex County's direct support professionals, we thank them for their dedication and commitment to its business with developmental disabilities.
Thank you. Okay. And you'll send it over to him. Now, I'm going to head over to counsel for, Councilmember George. I might as well start over there.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, the meeting is between our public safety agencies and the Borough Council. I just want to say, congratulations to Main Street and all the Borough employees for very successful Arts in the Park event. Perfect weather, seamless organization, and an expanding fine arts representation across the country. You all did a great job. Perfect weather gave me the opportunity to visit all of our Borough boards and commissions, and I just wanted to give a special shout out to our employees and volunteers. We had tables for everybody present. I walked and said hello to everyone and watched the public visiting everyone, including this Hovar who was presenting redevelopment, which I thought was great. Everyone said there was a great reaction at seeing what we actually do, and our volunteers were out there presenting us to the public and to our own residents. The Police Department and Rockmore Johnson Hospital's Trauma Services Unit will be presenting a program called Stop the Bleed for Emergency Injury Attention tomorrow with a community center at 7:30. The program teaches immediate emergency skills for traumatic bleeding injuries to help you stabilize someone who may be hurt and bleeding until emergency services arrive, which is one of the most critical items for care as any of our EMTs or police departments can tell you. The program also supplies trauma kits to houses of worship schools and other agencies with instructions on how to use and implement them. There are still a few seats available. Contact the staff at the Community Center. That's 732-712-2025. The Police Department will again be sponsoring trunk or treat this year. Last year's event was bright and even dazzling at times. It's much bigger and really a lot of funds than ever before. It's tentatively going to be Wednesday, October 27. There'll be more details coming on all of the websites and social media. The next council meeting is in October, so please keep an eye out, and we'll have it on the Borough website as well. Just as an update, the Police Department will be interviewing along with council members for a police officer position this week. It's an infill position due to promotions and retirements. We'll have more news on that as the process advances. Finally, just a bit of news. There's a powerful event car show on North Eight at the same time as Arts in the Park. This is a privately organized event for a private party, but our Police Department provided assistance to make sure that there was no overflow or problems with Arts in the Park. The upshot was that the chief and I got some contact information to reach out to the organizations that showed up with the exotics to make contacts for our own car show, putting us well ahead. I spoke to councilman O about the possibility of an event. They actually did consider us, but figured that with the support network that the organization has, they won't be able to sponsor it here in Jersey this year. The Fire Department, Police Department memorialized 9/11 on Thursday at the Fire Department Memorial, and thanks to everybody who turned out to remember that time of horror and change in our society. The library had a great showing at the Friends of the Library Book Sale, which was scheduled to coincide with Arts in the Park and was phenomenally successful. Crowds overflowed down south, North Fifth to the library. Saw what was going on. We're buying books. It was crowded. It was fun. Everybody was poking through the books that were put out. The Friends of the Library is an organization that supports the library with funding, volunteers for events. This year was special because the Friends, after a few years of quiet activity and losing members, has a new board. Congratulations to Allison Lo, who's the new board, the new Friends, sorry, president, and Board of Trustees members at large, Val Whitman and Renee George, who was assistant. The volunteers were out in style, and it looks like with the banner book sale going on as well, we're going to exceed all of our funding targets over the last couple of years. And that's my report. That's my report. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Postonik.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jason Pistonik. I chair the Health and Human Services Committee. I just had a couple of things to report in that area tonight. First, it's about that time of year again, and the Board of Health wanted to encourage everyone to get their flu and COVID vaccines for the coming season. And importantly, on that point, you may have heard or read that the federal government has limited access to the new COVID vaccines this season to the limited higher risk groups. But a few days ago, the New Jersey Department of Health issued an executive directive and standing order allowing anyone six months or older to get the COVID vaccine for the 2025-2026 season, and authorizing pharmacists to administer the vaccine without a prescription. So please make an appointment and get your flu and COVID shots. The second item I wanted to report on comes from the Commission for Universal Access. The bill list for tonight includes grants from the Commission to support the GLOW and GLOW Junior Programs that are HP High and Middle Schools. GLOW stands for the Growth and Learning Outside Walls, and these programs are designed to teach students across ability levels the skills needed to lead a productive and independent life outside the classroom. The Commission's grants are intended to support unfunded aspects of the GLOW programs, particularly for students whose families may face financial barriers with expenses such as prom and club trips, which can provide invaluable learning experiences for differently-abled students. And that was all that I had to report on for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. I also want to add that in your report about the flu and COVID shot, I was listening to the news, and they were telling people in New York were saying that they ran out of their flu and their COVID shots, and they were telling them to come to New Jersey because New Jersey still has. So, Jersey, look out. A lot of New Yorkers are going to come in to get those shots because there's no more in New York. That was, I think, last Monday, so I made sure I got my shot after hearing that news. Councilmember Vargas?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Pistonik Vargas, and I serve as the council representative of Arts and Recreation Department. First, I would like to commend the National Park for organizing a wonderful Arts in the Park street fair this past Sunday. It's really inspiring to see the community come together and to celebrate so many talented artists and crafters, including my son, who was there, and several Rutgers alumni that I have known since they were freshman year. It was really nice to see them sending out their art. It was a really great experience. As part of the street fair, the Arts Commission organized a unique event called Queer Choir with all Q's. The concert brought together members of the LGBT+ community, their friends, families, and allies for a one-time performance. We had, I was a part of it as well. We had just two hours to rehearse before performing live at the fair. The group included both trained and often voices, myself included, and it was a joyful community-building experience. Some participants, like me, had never performed for some publicly before for a lot of reasons, but the energy of the moment brought us together, and even the audience joined in, and it was really great. Special thanks to Queer Choir Director Kalu Taylor, who traveled all the way from Pennsylvania with his team, and to the Arts Commission member Arianna Abstudy, who coordinated the event. Looking ahead, the Arts Commission has several exciting events planned, including an upcoming spiritual contest. The scarecrows will be displayed on the street. The grand opening of the Free Little Art Gallery, which are in the process of finding a mini opening event. More sessions are coming up for the Learn and Create series this fall. If you know anybody who's interested in volunteering for the Arts Commission and hosting a mural on their property or getting involved in any way, please encourage them to go to me at nfornormahvargas@hpborough.com. Here are some upcoming events at the community center. Wednesday, tomorrow, September 17, there will be a holistic Healing Mind, Heart, and Soul presented by Hakkim Side Norwegian Health at 1:30 PM. Wednesday, the 24th, Middlesex County Senior at Health and Fitness School will start at 10:00 AM. Monday, September 29, there will be an Atlantic City trip. Departing from the community center at 9:30 AM, that is open to all. And on Tuesday, September 30, there will be a lucky guest tribute show at 12:00 PM. For more information of any of these events, please call the community centers, 732-819-0052. On tonight's agenda, you will see item 925221, which is a resolution for the Historical Commission's application for a grant for the New Jersey Council and the Humanities for an Oral History Grant. The Commission is currently planning a series of events to collect and present local history, a series of open forums around town. And I asked my fellow council members to support this resolution and for the community to get involved once we hopefully secure the grant and bring those events to life. Also Hispanic Heritage Month, which kicked off yesterday. So I want to acknowledge the wonderful contributions that Hispanic Americans have made to this country and remind everybody how ingrained and integral we are in the history of this country from before its establishment to the present. Happy Father's weekend, and I am proud to represent this council. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Economic Development Committee. I want to echo some of the things that we've heard already tonight. First of all, thank you to Phil and to the chief for the caravan and the cars. That's going to be a good contact for that. But it was also a special event. I really appreciate the effort for the police to make that happen for the family, the mental health. And then also, again, I wanted to thank the chief for the 9/11 memorial. It was a very, always a touching reminder of that tragic day. So I wanted to thank them. I will again echo all of the great comments about Arts in the Park. I was in Boston for a family bar mitzvah, so I actually wasn't able to attend, but every report I have heard was another great day. So I just wanted to give a shout out and thank you to Rebecca Hirsch and all the volunteers and Terry and all the members of boards and commission who made this such a great event. So, okay. I wanted to let people know that if you're interested in Boy Scouts, there's going to be an open house information meeting for the Highland Park Boy Scout troop on September 28 at 5 o'clock at the community center. If you are interested in what Boy Scouts do and all the opportunities for boys and girls, there's a Girl Scouts troop as well. It's September 28 at 5 o'clock at the community center. Okay, so today, Councilmember Hirsch and I attended the Governor's Conference on Economic Development and Housing in Atlantic City. There were several hundred people who were all deeply involved in these areas from all over the state. It's a really great opportunity to learn and hear from folks about new ideas to help local businesses and also what to look for going on with affordable housing. I went to sessions about ways to use arts and culture for economic development, update on tax incentives for local businesses, and latest thoughts on how to recharge downtowns and main streets. And I know Terry gets a little bit nervous every time we go to conferences because he comes flooding back with a whole bunch of wonderful things that we all want to do and want to do them right away. And I do have some of those, which we'll talk about. But one of the exciting things for me is how many of the best practices that were talked about at this conference are things that we're already doing here in Highland Park. So I just wanted to give a testimony to her and her team for all of that for following along. And I also just wanted to, primarily because he's not here, to let you know, I also was really, really amazed at what an advocate for affordable housing we have in Councilman Hirsch. He does this in his professional life, and so he needed to stay at the conference, which goes on through tomorrow. But I'll tell you, I tried to walk around with him in between sessions. We would take about ten steps, and another person would come up and ask him what's going on, or ask him to talk, or his thought on different affordable housing questions and issues. So we know he's the leader of affordable housing here in Highland Park. I just got some evidence that he's the leader throughout the state. So I think we're very, very lucky to have him. Didn't intend this to be an entire Hirsch event tonight, but both Rebecca and I certainly serve us quite well. And then lastly, I just wanted to wish everyone Shalom Tzva for Rosh Hashanah and Yom Pore, which is coming up. I hope everyone has a happy and healthy New Year. And in the immortal words of Sherman T. Quatter, "The next year will be an insight better than the last." Thank you very much.
Borough Administrator, report.
Good evening, Mayor. Can I hear just a couple of items? And I do want to echo the echoing of what a great day we had at Arts in the Park. And I really did enjoy my conversations with residents who wanted to talk about the South Third Ave Plaza, about redevelopment and hearing and bringing and informing people that some of which weren't even aware or not as aware as we are here about what's going on. So that is, it was a good reminder of how important it is to get out there. A couple reminders, because we don't have a meeting until October 21, the Highland Park Annual Garage Sale/Bulk Trash Celebration. It starts on October 18th and 19th, but then the bulk trash pickups are on Tuesday and Thursday the following week. And I just want to remind everybody there'll be no recycling that week to give our staff the time they need to go do that bulk trash pickup. So if you're interested in registering, I believe the information's on the Main Street Highland Park website of how you can do that. So if you want to participate in the garage sale, which again will be taking place on the 2nd of 19, I'd encourage you to get registered and start assembling your items. The other thing I just wanted to mention, it's been a long time in coming, our project with Middlesex County to both upgrade the water main on Woodbridge Avenue as well as do the road on Woodbridge Avenue. Fortunately, we're doing the water main first. It's going to start in October. I don't have the full timeline, and we will certainly be notifying the general public and the immediate properties along Woodbridge Avenue because there will be some disruption necessarily. So just wanted to get that back on everybody's radar because I looked at my emails. I think we've been talking about this project at least four years. So it's taken us a while to get here. I'm excited, but we're all going to have to be a little patient about how we get to work in the morning and also getting around town. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Alba, return.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Aaron Renaud. I'm with Renaud Crawford Mancello. I just wanted to take a few minutes and just sort of review with the public the participation aspects of the meeting. There's a nice-sized crowd today, so I figure it's probably worth it. Typically, the public is given two different opportunities to speak. The first one is going to come up shortly. That's the first public participation. We allocate 21 minutes or about three minutes to speaker. At that time, the public is able to speak on any item on the agenda. So that's your resolutions. And in the event that there's an ordinance on first reading, you'd be given the opportunity to speak on those. What you'll find is that there is a second public participation near the bottom of the agenda. That affords the public the ability to speak on any topic that you wish to bring forward. And again, it comes with that same three-minute time period. The third, and there's not an opportunity tonight, would be if there was an ordinance on second reading, which means that it has been passed with a prior one, and then today would be the final passage. The public is given the opportunity to speak on each of those second reading ordinances individually, although tonight there are none. So we look forward to hearing from everybody.
Thank you. Let me be noted that Council President Chohun came in at 7:21, and she does want to present her report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few items. First, my name is Stephanie Kim Chohun. I am the Chair of Finance. Just wanted to highlight some items on the agenda tonight. One that, as Chair of Finance, I'm very happy is all grants and mostly on there tonight. So with the song Water Mapping, that's funded partially by a grant that's on there. We have the Raices grant that's on there for county awards. We will have a 25% match. And then the New Jersey Council on Humanities, the Community History Grant, $5,000, which isn't a match. So no cost to us. We love that. Shout out to Council Norma Vargas for in her portfolio, one of her committees bringing a grant forward. We love to see that, our volunteers. And also wanted to announce some programs you should know about. The Anchor Senior Free Stay NJ is a single PAS1 application, which can be found on the state website. Property Tax Relief for seniors. And the state will, residents, the deadline to apply for that is October 31. The Stay NJ, which is mostly geared towards seniors, is 50% property tax reimbursement capped at $6,500. That's beginning next year, but you can go on the website and start applying. Also, again, I had mentioned this before, but now is the time, some of the Energy Assistance Programs that's available. The new season for the USF has opened, will be opening October 1st. And the NJ Shares Grant, which is up to $700 per utility, is available for moderate-income homes, household, sorry. Then also, just some announcements that it is Hispanic Heritage Month. This year's national theme is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. We celebrate our Hispanic and Latinx neighbors who contribute, enrich Highland Park every day. So thank you. Also wanted to announce the Mid-Autumn Festival. I'm not sure it's probably already announced. Just mark that in Saturday, October 4, from 12:00 to 4:30 at Farmers Market Park and Lot. Co-host, I Know the Borough, is a sponsor as well, the Highland Park Chinese Association and the Edison Chinmwood School. Then, I figured, after the summer, I was thinking, because my report is mostly always kind of dull, who wants to hear about finances? So I started this where I think of a finance tip of the month. So this month's finance tip of the month is credit monitoring. New Jersey residents are entitled to one free credit report per year from each bureau. That's Equifax Experience TransUnion at annualcreditreport.com. And you can stagger requests every four months to monitor your credit all year. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hop over to my report. And first, I want to, I want to say that I was, I am really happy with the Mayor Teen Advisory Group. We had our first meeting this past Sunday, and it was excellent. It was a very diverse group, and we had 12 members. First time we got 12 members. I'm really excited about that. They have some really exciting things planned for this year, 2025 to 2026. So stay tuned. You'll be hearing a lot more about what the Teen Advisory Group is going to be doing. And then staying in that same vein, I went to the Highland Park football game, and it was the first game of the season that I was invited to myself. Councilmember Postonik and Councilmember Hale went, and I got an opportunity to do my first coin toss. Never did that before, so go out. It was exciting. Then, following up on the library, the Friends of the Library had their book sale, and they started on Sat, I believe it was Sunday. They had it for three days, but they got an extension. Today is the last day that the Friends of the Library will be having book sales. And when I went there today to look, they were pretty much cleaned out, and they said that's the best that they've had in many years. So they did well. They said they were going to follow up with me to let me know the number of books that were sold. And I want to thank all the members who volunteered to make this event such a success, and especially their new president, Allison. She was very welcoming, and she was very excited about the number of books that was being bought. And so if you're still interested in books, I think they close at 8 o'clock. You can run down there and get more free books. And speaking of books, the Human Relations Commission, Highland Park Human Relations Commission, is going to be doing a town-wide book reading. And the book is called The Heaven and Earth Grocery Store. It's a really good book, and I would advise each and every one of you to get a copy and go to the Highland Park Human Relations website, see when the dates are, so we can come together and read something that is, I think, really uplifting, especially for the times that we're in. This is a long-awaited, and this is one of the things that I talk about all the time, and that's the road diet on a priority. So I have good news. In October, they're going to start with the Road Diet Project, and I cannot wait to see this, the beginning, because they told us that it would not be able to start for another three years. We're ahead of the curve. So they're going to be starting doing some of the road diet frame-out and everything else like that. So try to calm the traffic in that area. And while that is going on, they're going to be looking at right-of-way stuff. I have no specific date on that, but stay tuned. That you might have some traffic headaches for a little bit, but it's going to be for the greater good. Also, Arts in the Park, it was fantastic. This year, my first time, I was a judge at Arts in the Park in Main Street Highland Park. Gave me my clipboard and my marchionettos, and I went walking around and trying my best to be as fair as possible to judge all these amazing artwork. It was very difficult, but I was able to make a contribution of being a judge this year. And this, you can't see, it's a coaster. And this little coaster in the middle, it has a state of New Jersey on it. And in the middle, it has a little heart. And the heart is where Highland Park is in the middle of the state of New Jersey. And it really goes to our tag, to my tagline, Highland Park, small town, huge heart. So I have my So I have my own coaster to prove that. So that was really cool. And then this afternoon, I attended the senior luncheon. And Assemblyman Sterling Stanley's office came and they spoke about the State New Jersey Program in detail and about the Anchor Program. And one of the things that surprised me the most as they were giving the report is that a lot of people, a lot of seniors have not cashed their anchor check for the past two years. The money is still there. So if you're one of those people who have not cashed your paper anchor check, you still have time to go ahead and cash the anchor check. And if you want to donate it to a great cause, that's why you haven't cashed it, the food bank. And there's a lot of opportunities here in Highland Park where you can donate that money. So go ahead, please cash your anchor check. And if you were enrolled electronically, you should be start receiving those checks in the mail. And you're going to be receiving checks until October, because that was one of the big questions that was asked by the people who cashed their check. So stay tuned. This check started going out, electronic payments went out starting on Monday and it's going to continue to roll out. So State New Jersey will come later. That will be a paper check. And it was a great luncheon, great questions. Assemblyman Stanley, his office is going to be coming in next month to talk about the Treasury Department and other information that pertains to checks and what seniors need to do. So it's a good program. Stay tuned. I'm quite sure Councilmember Marcus will keep you posted. And I too want to echo, oh, before I go there, one more thing, garbage bags. It's that time of year for us to collect our garbage bag. If you need leaf bags, if you need leaf bags, please contact DPW. And they should have leaf bags available. And as the weather changed, so it's time for us to change our fire, our fire alarms in our home and our carbon dioxide detector. So please don't forget to change out those things as the weather starts to change. And last but not least, to all my Hispanic brothers and sisters, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. You serve, you belong here, you're part, you're the fiber of this country. And I just want to say kudos and whatever we can do to go out and support our Hispanic brothers and sisters. We all have a responsibility to do so. Thank you. And that's my report. Public participation. Twenty-one minutes, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom.
Terry, do we have anyone else? I have four attendees on Zoom, but I don't have any hands up.
So anyone from the public who has questions on this agenda is, can come up now and speak. Say your name and address.
Mary Boating, Madison Avenue. I actually have my own comments to make and then with your permission, somebody who's not here tonight asked me to make some comments for them. Is that possible?
It's on this, it's an item on the agenda now?
Yes, it is. Yeah. So my three minutes and then your three minutes. Yeah, thank you.
We're returning.
I'm sorry. No, you're afforded three minutes. There's not a mechanism for you to take the three minutes from somebody else. You can certainly comment on the other person's comments during your three minutes, but you're only afforded a three-minute window.
In the past, when somebody couldn't attend, they were permitted to read that person's statement.
I understand that. That's inappropriate though. Otherwise, we would literally have every member could just say, and then I have somebody at home or whatever. The purpose is it's three minutes to every person individually. You're afforded your three minutes. You can, anything related to the agenda as of right now, if it's a comment that someone else made to you, you're certainly welcome to make now, but you're not afforded six minutes instead of three.
Well, it's not for me. It's for somebody who could not be here.
I understand that, ma'am, but they can participate online, but they're not here to speak for their three minutes.
All right. You can start my three minutes now. Thank you. First, for the record, please do not renew the recreational marijuana pot shop license for jewelry store owner Sal Raspa and former Highland Park Police Officer Teddy Pardo. Please vote no on Resolution two twenty. I also want to clear out misleading statements that have been made by the council repeatedly throughout the last few years and that occurred again at the August twelfth meeting. Specifically at one hour eleven minutes into the meeting, Elsie, you claimed, quote, seventy-three percent of Highland Park people voted to have pot shops here. That is one hundred percent false. No one in Highland Park voted to have pot shops here, except for six council members. It's as easy to remember, six council members, ordinance for six pot shops. Elsie, your statement was actually the most exaggerated percentage quoted on this so far. So I feel I have to speak out. I'm not an English teacher, but what you're doing is called conflating issues. Failure to distinguish between two separate concepts, leading to confusion or the creation of a false equivalency. To be clear, the only ballot question that ever occurred on this issue was state ballot question number one. It did not ask any New Jersey resident if they wanted recreational marijuana stores in their town or not. I have problems with the language for you here. If you want to quote the percentage of Highland Park residents who voted for question number one, it's only sixty-eight percent. Not your inaccurate seventy-three percent and not even close to the percentage of residents that placed votes for Board of Ed that day. Four times more votes were even for Board of Ed members than for question number one. In addition, the exact same number of Highland Park residents who did vote for public question number one also voted for public question number two. So you need to stop using the state ballot as your excuse for what six council members did in this town. If you want to throw around actual numbers in the seventy percentages, you can say that seventy percent of New Jersey towns said no to selling recreational THC marijuana, because they were concerned about recreational drug use in their towns, especially to kids. This brings me to Melissa G's note. You don't have the time. We found these products in Carcy Park and a block from her home, which is near Gail Mittler's son's pot shop. These are pre-rolls. This one is pineapple express. It has no ID on it whatsoever. This one is pre-rolls called red and butter. Again, this is what you get for places and pot shops in residential neighborhoods and near our children's parks. Thank you so much.
I don't want to be young, ma'am.
In this, no further, ma'am. I have a motion to close public participation.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chohan.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
I want to raise her hand.
Can she go now after, after we, public participation was closed?
We've closed the public portion. Were you looking to speak on something on the agenda item?
Yes.
All right, did you have, have we taken the final roll call vote? Yeah. So, so, and I apologize. So, so for future, so when we're doing that, when that motion's going, that's the time for the audience to make sure that if they needed to speak, they're signed up. We'll have another opportunity to speak later and you are certainly welcome to speak on any item on the agenda later on as well as any other.
And sir, when can I get you the copies that I have intended to hand out?
Excuse me?
When can I give you these copies that I intended to hand out to you?
You can leave them on the table and I'll take them at the conclusion of the meeting if you want.
Can I hand them to you directly?
I don't have an issue with that.
Now, is that right? Yeah, thanks.
They'll have an opportunity to speak as soon as we go to the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, now we go to the consent agenda. And resolution. Ask for a motion to pull Resolution nine dash twenty-five dash two-two-three. Resolution supporting Rieses Cultural and Cultural Center Grant for Middlesex County Arts and Grant History to Support Installation of Air Conditioning to the Eugene M. Young Environmental Center, as it has been determined that Rieses is not qualified for the grant. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Having gone to many, many meetings over many, many years in the environmental center, it is extremely desperate, bad days with the turtle shells and the bird nests. If we could take over that grant, could we do it, please? I hope yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chohan.
If we can find other means, maybe the mayor can speak to our county commissioners to give us a timing. Other means.
Not through the other grant, but yes. Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
I just feel bad because I just spoke to them yesterday. I was so excited. Okay, yes.
Okay. Now, I may ask council members if there's anything that you would like to pull from the consent agenda for a separate vote. See if there's none. May I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda items, ten A through ten I and ten K?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Just want to note that one of them, we speak to many, many people as council members at the street events that we have. The most common question that I had from members of the public was with regard to the lead servicing line. So especially as to two nineteen for excavation for our next steps in the lead line of, yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chohan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Okay. And now I move to appointments. Shake Tree Advisory, Andy Warren. May I have a motion to confirm?
So move.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Just sorry to add on people, but Andy Warren's been doing the native plant sanctuary for years because it is really phenomenal. Great job. And then Mary Denver's memory of it, yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chohan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now we move into the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to conclude at nine PM. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom. And you could just come up to the microphone, state your name and you just make a little line. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Amanda McCann, I'm at two oh nine Dartmouth Street. I have been trying with my husband since twenty nineteen to reach out to the borough of Highland Park regarding the business at two oh five Woodbridge Avenue. It is called New York Auto Depot. They have been there since twenty nineteen. We have put in three open requests. The last one, they were still not registered with the town of Highland Park. The last known business in that, in that commercial business was McKinney Oil. They have been nothing but a nuisance to our neighborhood with extravagant respires at all hours of the day and night. They use up every inch of our parking on Dartmouth, on Exeter, on Columbia, on Harvard, between Franklin to Benor, if I'm not mistaken. As far as I know, they are in two other buildings in Highland Park that I'm not sure if those are registered as well. As far as I know, they started off in Minneapolis, New York. They were kicked out. They went to Brooklyn and now they are here in Highland Park. They have destroyed our quality of life on Dartmouth Street and in the surrounding streets. We have very little parking. They are open on holidays. They are waking us up in the middle of the night. I am one with anxiety and depression. So when I do get woken up in the middle of the night, I cannot go back to sleep because the cars are so loud. They claim to be a car sales business, but there is also a repair shop in that same location that in, from my area of expertise, working in a car sales place, is not allowed in New Jersey. It has to be a separate building. As far as we know, there are two other businesses in that building that include a chauffeur service. A gentleman who sells car parts for the vehicles and a paint shop, which we have used throughout our homes and our streets and whatnot. I urge everybody here to please look into this business in Highland Park, because they are destroying our lives. We have been here since nineteen ninety-nine and the businesses prior, although sometimes they were loud, they did not destroy our quality of life. And this has just been ongoing and we have nowhere else to build this. So please, I urge you to look into this, to look to see why they're not registered with Highland Park, to see what they are doing there. And I do appreciate any and all help. Thank you.
Just a point where I didn't hear the address.
Two oh five Woodbridge Avenue.
Thank you.
New York Auto Depot.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morthea Howkas and I also live on Dartmouth Street. I've been a resident of Highland Park for more than twenty years. In terms of this New York Auto Depot, it has been such anxiety for our neighborhood that we've never had before. The cars are parked on our streets, not for a day, for days. I have pictures of these vehicles that are left there. On their website, there is my home with our personal car plates posted as they take pictures of these vehicles that are for sale. They work all night hours and they park their cars. And now they have moved them down to the next block. So they have been taking over parking spots, not just one block, not just two cars, all the streets in our neighborhood, which is Exeter, which is Dartmouth, which is all those surrounding areas there. They also, on Woodbridge Avenue, they park their cars, not on the sidewalk, but as far as in as they can get. I have gone to the manager. I have spoken to him directly to ask him as a courtesy if they can either do something about all these vehicles or not. And then they move them and then they're back again. So if you can please look into how you maybe can help or resolve this issue, I would greatly appreciate it. I've had my kids go through this district and my son actually was hit by one of their vehicles. Because what they do is they go in and out of that parking lot at all hours of the night. It was three o'clock on a Sunday and my, and my son was hit by one of their vehicles. So I would like, if any of you or all of you can take some consideration in looking into this. And also on a second note on the agenda, I do not support all these pot shops that have come into such a small town. We have way too many that have come to this town for such a small town. If I had my kids in the school district today, I would not have them in the school district. And one of the reasons would be this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi, excuse me. My name's Mickey Deener. I live on North Sixth Avenue. I'm a longtime Highland Park resident. I'm part of a group of organizations and their supporters, including Dyer, New Labor, and the Divisable Highland Park. Almost two weeks ago, I approached council members Postelneck and Hirsch via email, requesting that they introduce to this council a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, which is Senate Bill S three six nine two and Assembly Bill eight four nine eight seven. I also stated that we hope this resolution would be a no-brainer for this council to pass. And we're a bit disappointed to see the resolution did not make it to the council's agenda for this meeting. But honestly, we don't see any reason why you put an act on it tonight. In fact, we are here tonight to urge you to build upon this council's own legacy. In twenty seventeen, you passed a resolution declaring Highland Park a safe and welcoming community for immigrants. Tonight, we ask you to reaffirm that commitment by passing a resolution in support of the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act. New Jersey, as you know, is one of the most diverse states in a nation of immigrants. Nearly one in four of our state's residents is an immigrant. Furthermore, over ten percent of U.S. citizen children in New Jersey live with at least one undocumented family member. These are not abstract statistics. These are our neighbors, our friends, our families and families of our children's classmates. As you must know, our legislature has been sitting on this legislation for some time. As you must know, our legislature has been sitting on this legislation for some time. Right now, probably based on some fear that addressing the issue of immigration is not a good issue to be addressed during election season. However, the urgency for this act is clear. The actions of the current administration, which started only months ago, are having a devastating effect on the communities in our state, our neighboring communities, and the nation. Customs and Border Patrol, ICE, and all the entities that we refer to as WMEG are acting with impunity and are becoming Trump's own mass militia. We must resist these efforts with every tool that we have, including the Immigrant Trust Act, also known as the I T A.
Thirty seconds.
I will try to summarize. By passing this resolution, you're not taking a new step, but you're reinforcing a promise you made in twenty seventeen. You would be choosing to maintain the stability of our community, protect all our residents, and join a growing chorus of municipalities across New Jersey, calling on the state legislature and the governor to pass the I T A into law with deliberate speed. So thank you for your time. I have copies of the proposed resolution. I'll drop off that all of you can save. We hope you will consider it uh right now.
Hi, I'm Tony Faber. I live on Raritan Road in the Scotch Plains. I've lived my whole life within a few miles of uh Highland Park. Uh, I'm also here to speak in support of uh the resolution for the Immigrant Trust Act. I think nothing could be more appropriate as a celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month to speak out for uh those residents which find themselves terrorized today. Uh, I would also like to simply add that the urgency is now, given that if the Republican candidate wins in November, he has made very clear he will have uh New Jersey Police cooperating with ICE agents in apprehending uh undocumented immigrants, which would make Highland Park and all of New Jersey's communities much less safe. And then it would drive immigrants underground. They would not speak out against crimes happening in their communities. They would not appear uh anywhere where they think they could be apprehended by ICE. There are little opportunities for towns like Highland Park to make a difference in this issue, but this is one place they can in in supporting a resolution and giving voice to those people who've been terrorized uh during the Trump administration. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Uh, my name is Ellen Witt. I live here in Highland Park. Uh, and I also just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge all the New Labor members who are in orange, who are also here tonight um in support of this re- um resolution for the Immigrant Trust Act. Uh, I'm also a volunteer with Dyer deportation immigration response at KFO. I coordinate the Dyer hotline, which receives calls from people who have seen ICE maybe in their neighborhoods and are reporting on that. Uh, people who have loved ones who are actually in ICE detention and people who call regarding different immigration issues. Um, since Trump took office in January, we have literally received hundreds and hundreds of calls um from families torn apart and terrorized by ICE. Now, I know at least three people who were residents of Highland Park, who were inside Highland Park and were picked up by ICE here in Highland Park in the last few months. So I I bring this up so that we all can fully understand that ICE abductions are not just something that happens someplace else. They are here too, and they have picked up our neighbors. I also uh want to point out that the Immigrant Trust Act will prevent local police and government agencies from becoming arms of ICE. Everyone needs to know that police, hospitals, schools, and other government agencies are doing their jobs and not collaborating with ICE, ICE's violent violations of human rights. This legislation recognizes that government agencies will need to respond when ICE provides a proper judicial warrant. But without a judicial warrant, these agencies will not have to expend their time, their budget, their staffing to meet the whims of immigration enforcement agents. When the Immigrant Trust Act was first introduced, which was two years ago now, um we had few raids actually in the communities in New Jersey.
Thirty seconds.
How much?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, my God. The new, and the New Jersey Legislature did did not act, but now throughout New Jersey, we're having people abducted. So we can't wait any longer on this critical piece of legislation. The leadership in Trenton has not even allowed a committee hearing on the Immigrant Trust Act. Knowing uh what's up ahead, it's extremely important that every level of government now push for this to get passed. So we need you to step up yourselves and start pushing. So um I'd like to know if any members of this council will commit now to help push in Trenton individually and also to push to get this resolution resolution through here in Highland Park.
Just as a point of order, uh, the the time period now is for the public to make their comments. It's not a back and forth with the council. The council will reserve any comments and they may choose to make comments once the public portion has concluded.
So that's supposed for the, for you after we have all spoken.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Captain Dory. I live on Granite Avenue. I'm a mem- member of the Senate Committee of Municipal Hall of Park. Um, the reason I'm speaking here and amplifying and adding to the comments that have been made before is that we're facing clearly an intensification of raids by ICE. We're getting more and more of them. They're getting more and more uh obstructive and dangerous. We've seen these in recent raids in Edison. We clearly need to have more protection for the immigrants living in in our area, and we need to go beyond the existing structure that we have now. The uh Immigrant Trust Directive that was issued by Attorney Platten may well not survive for the next few months because if Jack should run the events, he will clearly be replaced. But Mike Sherrill has made no commitment to putting him back in place. If he's not back in place, we can't be assured in any way that the next Attorney General will reaffirm the uh Immigrant Trust Directive that Platten's office issued. Furthermore, that directive, however good it was, doesn't cut cover a lot of the situations that Ellen was just talking about. We need a much more directly state, the police, the schools, the hospitals, that they've got not entering any data sharing agreements with ICE, that they've got to collect the very minimum of data that they need to deal with with their clients so that ICE cannot then even subpoena data that may be used in their raids. So the Immigrant Trust Act is really important to pass, particularly at this time. Happily, our L D eighteen legislators are all co-sponsors of the Immigrant Trust Act. The problem really is with the legislative leadership. This is somewhere where many of you may have contacts with them. It's extremely important that we begin to put strong pressure on Senator President Skatara, also on Speaker Coffin to try to get this legislation passed. Even if they want to hold off until after the election, and we think that's a mistake, they absolutely must move it in lay and duck. And as you know, very few bills will enter that funnel. We really urge you to please put our town on record that you support that bill being passed, and that please use your private connections to convey to them and put pressure on them to get this bill passed. It is that crucial. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Seth Cockerdale, Reform Church of Highland Park. Um, first of all, just a a comment on my love for this town. I love to come to a meeting and hear about the queer choir, about arts in the park with a welcoming theme, about the importance of world history, about encouraging vaccinations, celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, and that we're working on books that have to do with groceries and such. I haven't read that book, but it all sounds good. Everything I've heard is is right on point, and this is on point too, to have our town stand on behalf of immigrants. Um, and the Immigrant Trust Act, I won't repeat what's just been said. I will say, though, that we went to the Edison Council a day after fifty more people added to the seventy people who had been abducted from that community, and it didn't make it on the agenda there. There wasn't a moment of silence, and I said if the, if there had been a fire on a block where fifty white people had been taken, there would have been an outcry, and there wasn't a bit of an outcry at that meeting. It took a ton of us showing up to raise it as a real issue. It's a huge issue when people get abducted. So I want to say tonight that solidarity for us, though in all honesty, at the borough level, you can't do much. Like, people say that, they said it at Edison, that this is like the state, this is the feds. What you can do is actually a lot more than you think you can do. Um, first of all, express outrage when people disappear and tell us as a community who to tell within the council so that you know when Ellen knows that three people got picked up in town, that we can tell you and you can help us express outrage. Second, help express compassion for families that have somebody detained and that have been split up um by deportation. Um, next, assisting local businesses in really knowing the dangers in workplaces. We've come to learn a lot about bonded warehouses. I don't know if there are any in Highland Park, but there are tons of our residents who are working in bonded warehouses where um C B P has the ability to go in and do searches, and they're bringing ICE in with them in ways that have led to those big Edison things just three miles away from here. Finally, raising funds for detained individuals and their struggling families. We're raising tens of thousands of dollars up with legal fees right now and to help with rents for people, not just in Highland Park, throughout the state. And it would be beautiful to know that the town could stand with us at this time. But mostly, we're so disappointed that our state legislature just has sat on their hands for so long about the Immigrant Trust Act and you showing this sort of local support and at the same time pushing our folks who co-sponsored but don't make a peep about it um would be really helpful. If you could tell them, if you're going to co-sponsor something, have some guts to speak out about. Thank you.
Hello, councilwoman, I'm the mayor. I'm in, I live on, I live in.
I'm sorry, do you have your name? Revit, okay.
Uh, I live in Lawrence, Highland Park. Uh, I also uh want to ask and implore the council to pass this resolution. Uh, in Edison, it did get passed. It got passed because someone in the council simply uh proposed a motion. And it was essentially passed right there and then. Um, I'm not gonna labor the points that have already been raised, except that it's it's here. It's devastating to our community, our neighboring communities. Uh, the current climate is making it increasingly more dangerous and violent and scary for uh people in our community and our neighboring communities. And this is something that it's, this is something that this borough can do. It's pretty simple. Uh, it's a start. It certainly isn't, everything's a lot more that can be done. But passing a resolution sends a really strong message that we care uh about humanity, human lives, uh and safety in our communities. So I just implore you to please pass this resolution and then do everything within your power to push it in this state. Uh, just to add this one thing.
Hi, my name's Lisa Bennett. I live on one eighteen North Sixth Avenue, and I've been a resident of Highland Park most of my adult life. And I want to reiterate that I hope that you will consider the resolution tonight and to vote on it tonight. And or at least let us know where you stand on it and how you see it. And I have another question. So our police chief is here. Um, what is the current policy of the police in terms of ICE? That they come into our community and they ask for assistance? So if you could answer that at some point.
Hi, my name is Fella Gersman. I live on North Sixth Avenue. Um, I also like to second what everything everyone is, everyone here has been saying about a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. Um, I also work with the former church of Highland Park, and I've been supporting families who've been separated by ICE detention. A lot of people here today have used the word disappear to talk about what's happening when somebody is abducted by ICE. Um, I think that's accurate in a lot of ways, but we also have to think about, you know, they don't vanish. They don't move to a detention center. And these detention centers are not regulated the way they should be. Um, I'm working with a family where father was detained by ICE shortly after he had his spinal surgery. Once he was detained, he received absolutely no medical care. And by that, I mean no antibiotic, no pain medication. There were staples in his back that were never removed. When a colleague of mine, who's a nurse who works at Global Grace Health, wrote a letter to the detention center demanding that he be given medical attention, they responded by no leaving the test. Uh, so there's a reason that people are dying here in detention centers. I just want to urge everyone here to do everything they can, including introducing and voting in favor of a resolution tonight.
There are four people on Zoom. No hands up.
Seems that there's no one else that wishes to speak at this time. May I have a motion to close public participation? Roll call.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yeah.
Council President Kent Johanna?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonik?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Couple of things that came up. I'm going to have the Chief and Councilmember George look into the New York Auto Spot Depot that's here that we heard about tonight, that's taken up all the parking spaces and created noise populations. So both of you could look into that and get back to me with that. And then also, Immigration Trust Act, we hear you. I hear you loud and clear. As you can hear, I also speak with an accent, so I'm one of those immigrants. I am an immigrant myself, and I have seen it in friends and family that have been devastated by the current disappearance of people. And so we, as mayor and council, was going to take a look at this and make sure that everyone receives a copy of what was shared tonight, and then we can make a decision. We're not going to make a decision tonight, let me be clear. But we will be looking at this, and we will discuss and get back to everyone in short order because we know this is a critical issue. If there's ever been a critical issue, this is it because we cannot turn on any of our social media pages without seeing people being thrown to the ground, being arrested, being harassed, and everything else like this. So we know it's critical, and I know we all have a responsibility sitting on the stairs, what we need to do. So we need, we will need to discuss and then come to a consensus and make a decision. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. We are fully aware, as you, or as it was noted that, by Mickey, that in 2017, that we passed the Act supporting that our police officers, at first it was sanctuary, and that our police officers will not act as ICE agent. They will not eat ICE. This year, when this whole thing started, I reached out to Chief Jeffrey Abrams, and I said to him, I said, "Chief, can you please pull up how Highland Park stands and what Highland Park Police Department wants to do if ICE comes into town? That then we will not support, or none of the officers will act in support of any ICE agent." And that has been posted on the police department website. So that's still there. It's not going away. And we follow the Attorney General guidelines. We're looking, the police department will continue to follow the guidelines of the AG's office. And so give us some time to work on this. As you heard, that we're going to have a meeting. We're going to have work session, and then we can discuss it in the forward. I thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's, none of it is lost than me, and none of it is lost than any one of us sitting here on this stage. So thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into our executive session. And we're going to be discussing cross-access easement at 332 Raritan Avenue. And the second item will be JSM versus Highland Park. May I have a motion to move to executive session?
So move.
Oh, may I have a motion? Yeah, I do. I may have a motion to adopt the resolution for executive session. Roll call.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Council President Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Roll call.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasternak?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
And just so you know, that the end of our meeting will end at the end of our executive session this evening. And our next meeting will be on October 21st. So thank you all for coming out.